...official swearing in. I state your name.
I, Shane Birkner.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
A citizen of the United States.
And the state of Washington.
And the state of Washington.
And that I am legally qualified.
And legally qualified.
To assume the office.
Assume the office.
Of the city of Liberty Lake.
City of Liberty Lake.
Mayor. Thank you. That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And the state of Washington.
And the state of Washington.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of this office.
Discharge the duties of this office.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
You are so strong.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Are you not up here with your family?
I will. I would do the picture. We've all seen how well my conversation about my family.
You've switched it up. Can't make changes, right?
All right.
Congratulations.
Thank you. On my family. My wife. My other daughter. My grandson. And my two parents. Okay. I'm gonna move on to city business. Let's get started. I do want to say I'm really excited about where this city's positioned. We're in a better position than we've ever been. We have a great council. We have a great staff. A lot of you faced it with the police department. And I really am excited about the team dynamic that we're gonna create. And look forward for you guys. So thank you all for coming out. It means a lot. Thank you. Okay, so this is an opportunity for citizen comments. If you do want to comment, there's yellow cards that you can fill out. If you haven't had a chance to do so. I do have one from J.C. You want to come up to the mic, please? With no disrespect to the city council or to the mayor, brother, you did. Hundreds of people that I was able to talk to and support you with. Many questions came up. One was, why? Why am I supporting you? Why do I have a sign that everybody that drives by my house has to read? And the answer was that I gave them, you know what we have right now. And with someone of your character, I basically said, I believe I can trust you. That's a profound statement from someone that grew up in the sixties and was a street preacher in Bergen riots. That I can trust the man. In 1787, all of you should know this, because you swore an oath to the Constitution. It was ratified. And our Constitution survived for 233 years. That Constitution is what we govern, our country, and even down to the local and city level. And the new city council, congratulations. Congratulations. I think there's a lot to be expected from this city. As we all know, the Spokane Valley has gone over to the dark side. And we are hoping for truth and honesty to be performed in this city. I can't move any further east without leaving the state, which I will. So, brother, congratulations again. We want honesty from the city council. And we want to see, we have an incredible ability to move forward as a city. We can, we can make statements and stand. We don't have to become what Enslie wants us to be, the new California. We can become maybe the state of Liberty, 51st State. Sorry, that's a political. Anyway, I'm gonna remind you of something that Mark Twain said. Lie travels halfway around the world while truth is put in harm's shoes. We request truth from our city council and from our mayor. And brother, congratulations again. Thank you, sir. Any other citizen comments? We all have a shot at the end, so. Okay. We are going to move on to reports. Liberty Lake Sewer and Water District.
So, little Genway, Liberty Lake Sewer Water District. Mayor, council. So, we're still pumping and collecting. I think I started mine commissionership with that comment. I was also a little bit this turn out, so. Don't forget to spill out your financial disclosures. So, we're being a little nostalgic, so we just hired a new attorney, Michael Moon Law. Our guy, Stanley Schultz, is retiring after 35 years. So, he wrote a little letter to all of us. And I'll just read you a little bit of it. He says, "When I first started working in a district, Liberty Lake community consists of 500 households, 200 of which were year-round presidents." See where we've gone? There are almost no businesses or stores except for the Liberty Lake Landing Tower. At the end of his letter, he talks about, "It's not here anymore." That makes me sad. The district recently built a treatment plant. And we put in a few pipes with the EPA grants and some developer subscriptions. That's how our district started. It was literally broke for many of those first few years. He said they would sit around at the Liberty Lake Community Church and find out how they could make the next month's payroll. Was that bad? So, fast forward 35 years. The district has prospered along with Liberty Lake community. The district has an award-winning staff, a national reputation for sewer and water utility management and lake water quality. And the district serves 10 times the number of households in 1985. So, we've come a long way. The district has progressed from being near bankrupt to being, as our state consultant stated, the most solvent special purpose district in the state of Washington. So, that tells you how far the district's come. And I think the city is equal as well. So, good luck. And we'll be pumping and collecting right along with you.
What about trees?
Trees, yeah, you gotta treat that water. Anybody from the youth commission? Library board?
Realized I was gonna be speaking, but anyway, I'm Sandy Bishop. I'm a board of trustees for the Liberty Lake Library. And last month, you heard the report from the consultant, Paul and Ann Associate. So, now our charge is to take that information, put it into a breakdown plan and inform it. So, that's, we're gonna be very busy. Thank you. And congratulations, Mayor Birkner.
Any questions? Okay. Heart to heart. All right. Making this job easy. Okay. Mayor, council reports.
Just a matter of like a report on today, yesterday, today. That we've had several meetings in regards to Trailhead. We had a meeting ahead on that. Scott has been able to put together a version of a group of individuals. That we've had a period of seven meetings now. The presentations have one tomorrow morning at 6:45. You're the ones who get up early enough to attend the Kiwanis meeting, who's gonna be there. On the 14th, which is next Tuesday, we're gonna be having a meeting here. The council's gonna be presenting some of these ideas to be able to move forward. So, I would certainly encourage, I love seeing this attendance. This is just, I appreciate everyone being here. But moving ahead with the idea on Trailhead, it'd be really outstanding that for you folks who are residents here or non-residents, utilize the call course. Plan an attendee on the meeting on the 14th, listen to some of the ideas that will be able to be presented to us. But what we can do, and how it can be implemented over a period of time and move forward on Trailhead. It's been very productive and I've been very impressed with the participation of our citizens. And this is always a come forward to your minister advice.
I have to second that. We had a lot of really great discussions around Trailhead and what it could be. And a lot of those conversations were based around not just golf, but community activities. I think that's what this really speaks to with this community. You know, it's a true sense of compassion, love, and commitment to each other as we move forward throughout the city. And that's really what we want to try to encompass with this project that we're discussing. So, if you have an opportunity to attend one of the meetings, it's really great information that we can get feedback from, so thank you. I was reminded to ask all the council to make sure you use your mics. Okay, city administrator report.
Thank you, Mayor Birkner. I'm gonna go ahead quickly, so we had a lot of great information to you and the community. So, first thing I was gonna mention is there's a number of appointments that need to happen to take care of business. And we have these scheduled for the next council meeting on the 21st. And one of those is STA. And we did receive favorable feedback from Mike Kennedy. Councilwoman Kennedy is willing to serve again, but I'm not sure why to say this. So, we could look at the agenda. So, if you are interested, could you say that, Mayor Birkner, or myself, know? On the Spokane Regional Transportation Council, Mayor Birkner is interested in being appointed to the position with the backup of Dan Dunn. But if any of you other, if any of you have interest, please let us know as well. What we're trying to do is get the agenda ready for the 21st. I'm gonna move right on to Amoresco, our energy audit. And this is really an important investment that I think our council has made recently. And that's looking at our facilities, finding ways that we can save money and be more efficient. Rob from Amoresco is here to answer any questions that you have. This is a contract that's in your packet. It's $8,500. They're gonna do an assessment of some of our key priority areas and then bring back a proposal of how we can do things such as the irrigation system that's running apart that's probably 25 years old. It's also looking at emergency point of general police department and a few other things, too. So, the $8,500 investment is pretty much two things. A work plan, supplementing gent staff, but also the ability to apply for grants. Rob is here to answer any questions that the council may have. It is under agenda for consideration.
More questions from the council? Is anything you wanted?
Mayor, council, thank you. I'm Rob Hayne with Amoresco. It's a program that's funded through the Department of Commerce. Where the energy grants come through. The state Department of Enterprise Services helps facilitate these types of projects. And we've found quite a few good opportunities that the city will benefit from. And we see typically 20% to 30% in energy savings. And from our original feasibility analysis, that savings is there.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna move on to Winterglow. We all know that Winterglow is kind of winding down on January 1st. And I just wanted to point out a few things. One is we had 1,000 hours of volunteer time in setting up and breaking down that event. That is amazing. And globally, I want to tell you, I went to some holiday parties and those kinds of things. How many people said, "What a wonderful thing, what a wonderful event that was here in Liberty Lake." Jen is having a debrief with a lot of the organizers. And so, she's gonna bring back a more, a longer report next council meeting on the 21st. So, overall, I think it went really well. Mayor Birkner, I know you had to leave this area as well.
Yeah. Did you want to take this?
Not Rachel.
No, not you. I wanted to do this.
Down in front.
For a couple of reasons. The work that you put into this. For those of you that don't know, or didn't get a chance to see it, we had a light festival called Winterglow. Your crew put on an amazing, amazing event for this community. And so, I want to thank you. And for the entire community, we heard nothing but amazing things, so I want to thank you.
And Julie, Sherley, and Phil are here.
Yes. For everybody involved, you guys have put in a lot of work. And I do want to recognize one of your colleagues, Ron. Who did pass away during all of this. The work, just getting to meet him, he's a really, really neat guy. And so, I'm very sorry for your loss. And I look forward to celebrating Ron in the next Winterglow, we did.
Thank you. Thanks for starting me on that one. Sorry. That's a hard one. You know, I have to thank the board. Phil Robinson, Sherley, and my wife Julie. It wouldn't be possible to even pull this off the last six years, but to go on. It wouldn't be possible without them. So, I can't say enough good about those people. And, you know, I just, there's, there's no words for that one. The 1,000 hours of volunteer, that's basically an underestimate. Because I know that there's more than that. That's just what we reported.
Sorry, Anita.
For our first year, it went off really well. We know our strengths, we know our weaknesses, and we do have a direction with this community. I really want to say how much I appreciate the lead volunteers that stepped up. Tom, Tom, Polly, Dan, Brad, Julie, Sue, and anybody else. I apologize that I missed you, Anita. Anybody that came there and helped was greatly appreciated. You don't really know how much it took to put this on until you actually stand there and do it. Like I said, it went off really well. I just, I was, I was pleased. And I look forward to working with you next year.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so the next item on our report has to do with Harvard and Henry Road. And for those of you that live in Liberty Lake, this is a really exciting time in our community to put together some design works on Henry Road. But before I go on, I'm gonna try to make kind of an engineering thing a little bit more exciting, so. Sometimes it can be very dry. So, a couple of things I just wanted to mention. The agreement with WashDOT, we put the final touches on it at 4:30. So, you've got a new copy that addresses the termination clause with WashDOT's 9.2. And it basically provides equal standing between ourselves and Washington State Department of Transportation as it relates to the contract. So, if you want to look at that, that's the only thing that changed. The agreement with WashDOT, the terms and conditions have not changed. The Attorney General's Office basically took a very complicated agreement and simplified it, took out some redundancies. And that's what you see the difference from the workshop. So, what I will say to the community, in case you're interested in this project, let me just touch on some of the scope. So, the agreement with WashDOT provides that the Harvard Road widening project and the westbound Almerath extension at Harvard Road is already designed. And our goal is to receive construction funding to build that. As some of you might know, Initiative 976, which was a state initiative, caused the governor to pause some of these projects. So, the construction is paused, the design is done. The other thing is Henry Road. And for those of you that are familiar with Liberty Lake, from Mission on the north side of the city, just, let's say, the east of the Southwood Middle School to the south side of I-90 over here on Country Vista by Henry Road, there would be an overpass. So, that if you live in the River District or you live on this side, you could basically go to the other side of I-90 without having to use Harvard Road anymore. So, it provides great circulation. It's a wonderful benefit to our school district. It's a wonderful, wonderful benefit to our first responders, whether it be these or that. So, it provides some circulation. And I know that collectively, our council has been very, very supportive of this project. So, the agreement with WashDOT is that we will design the project. And then when we're done designing it, we will turn it over to them to design, or to, excuse me, do what we call construction management. The design is gonna take about a year. And during that time, we hope that the decision gets made about the funding from 976 so that the construction funding can be done. So, in a nutshell, that's kind of the agreement with WashDOT. We, the city of Liberty Lake, are committed in this agreement, we should do improvement, to fund $6 million for the construction of this project. And if it goes over a certain threshold that RJ will cover under scenarios, we are also responsible for overages. And like I said, RJ will cover that, we'll be very quick. The other thing that we are getting credit for is that the right-of-way was, right-of-way is a credit. The cost of design is a credit. And the cost of WashDOT's review, that we have to pay them to review the design, is a credit against the $6 million. And also, the reimbursement to the city, if you will, is eligible for tip and reimbursement. So, this is really an exciting time for our community. I wish the 976 outcome didn't impact our project, but it did. But moving forward with design is a year effort. And I think it sets us up to have some very positive options in a year so we can pursue other funding sources, whether it's the funding that we lost through 976 or other funding, SRGC or TID, there's other funding sources that we can pursue. So, I'm gonna go very quickly. There's also an agreement in your packet with Lochner. Jeff Peters is here. We negotiated for design services. He was, their firm was selected out of three. And there were heads and shoulders above the other two. We negotiated the agreement. The terms and condition and profits were all looked at. It is more than what it was originally planned at a co-driving level, but it still falls within what we think is appropriate compensation for their services. I'll answer those questions if you have any at this time. It is approximately $1.4 million and $50,000 contingency to us to manage school and those kinds of things. It is about, I think Councilwoman Kennedy mentioned to you, you look at the price of the project and the percentages. It falls within the realm of about 10% of the council budget. The appraisal status is complete. There was two appraisals done. The right-of-way that was contributed to the city by Centennial Properties in exchange for Harvard Road credits, I will go through all the details there. But the property, that strip of land 100 feet wide, it's about a little over six acres. The appraisal came in at $1.2 million. And so, that again is a credit against the $6 million. At this time, RJ's gonna walk through some scenarios so you know kind of what our exposures look like.
So, this is similar to back on October 29th. We introduced this scenario sheet of what that $6 million looks like and how it would be broken down based on some different scenarios. What we know today within the contract, there's 150,000 for landscape improvements. What we also know is the good escape, the right-of-way, is valued at $1.2 million, which is this, which is this number here. On tonight's agreement is the Lochner contract. It also includes the contingency of $1.4 million, 62. So, if we didn't go contingency, that number would adjust now. We also are estimating our staff costs and services provided. So, to do this appraisal, we had to engage the services of theirs. That is also including contract. WashDOT will have some design review to do. We designed it, they have their design team look at it, they will bill us for that. Design, as a contract, will come to consulate at 8:00. And then what is left over is what our portion of construction of Henry Road would be. So, this is, this is over a two or three-year period, but this is the idea of what you see happening. So, this last part, the construction of Henry Road, about $3 million, that gets us to the full $6 million. And that happens more in 2022 time period. What the agreement also does call out is this savings to the project. So, we share if there's savings in the project on this. So, there's a budget estimate. And with WashDOT saying that there's savings on the Harvard Road and the Henry Road that the city would receive money back. So, based on a scenario where everything comes in budget, Barker, Harvard, Henry, all come in budget, there's savings to the project, we would get $677,000 back to us. This is after all of everything's been closed out. So, this cash summary part here is just showing how the money's being distributed out. The cash paid to WashDOT is about $2.5 million in this scenario, if everything comes on budget. The cash that we paid for design, because that's a credit, that's that $1.4 million. And the cash paid for the other credits that comes up from the top line, that includes our staff time, the services, WashDOT's review time. Because we're splitting up the design for Henry Road, we would seek reimbursement depending on when the project's done. If it's not this year, then it's early next year. But when the total design done, and when construction starts, that's the second reimbursement for the lifted tip. And then we're hoping that be a 2022, depending on when we get construction start. One of the things to talk about, okay, well, this is, if everything comes in budget, we do have some what-if scenarios. So, if, looking at how this thing is designed, because it's all is looking at the budget that was in place. If, let's say, construction for Henry goes over 10% of our budget, the savings to the city, I've mentioned the savings above, would still be $483,000. So, total cash paid to the city was about $4.3 million. I did a 20% scenario, we still are in that savings category. So, they're still haven't exceeded that 20.9 million for the entire projects. The project budget would have to go over by 35% for there to be no savings. So, that's where we come into, well, we're responsible for that amount, over $6 million. So, looking at the numbers, there has, there's a significant amount of overages that would have to happen on the project before there would be a point that we're, for that over $6 million included. So, if you're asking yourself, well, $4.7 million is not $6 million. You gotta remember that we are being, the credit for the appraisal, that's, that keeps on there. So, that credit for the appraisal is part of that $6 million. The WashDOT does consider that part of the project, so.
Questions from the council?
For a comment personally. Thank you, RJ, for breaking this down and attending tonight. What was worked at originally from the state is that this was a combination of Barker, Harvard, and Henry. And right away, you'll think Barker was not even in the city. It's important to realize that we would be on the hook if there's any overages. And I think the likelihood of that is pretty slim. But it's important that you do realize that on Barker cap, we will not be liable for any overages if they were over on that. It's important to realize. Thank you.
So, a couple of other things. There is a budget amendment to provide the funding for the design costs. It's in your packet today. It's in your package today. If you would consider suspending the rules, we're doing a second read on the budget amendment. We'd appreciate that so we could move forward with executing the design contract. The schedule that has been included is almost a full 12 months. And so to me, weeks matter in the past when we get started with this new all-tougher design. And we're looking forward to an engineer's estimate after the design is completed. So that is, if you consider doing a suspension, we would appreciate that. And then finally, what's next? So during the workshop, we've heard about Spokane County's request to extend the term of the tip. So that's being worked on by Spokane County. It's basically approved by the city probably in February. That will come back. And then WashDOT will be providing us a one-page contract to provide for their design review services. And so that needs to come back too as well. So those are kind of the next steps. And over the course of the time, we'll keep you informed, you know, as the project materializes. A lot of the preliminary work is surveying geotech, those kinds of things. You probably won't see any renderings, if you will, until, Jeff, spring, summer.
Yeah, I'll be sure of that, yeah.
And there's 30%, 60%, 90%. And it is a tight schedule, it's an aggressive schedule, but we're optimistic that we will keep this project going. Okay, so dates to remember. One thing Jen wanted me to mention, the Park and Arts Commission has a special meeting. It's actually January 13th at Fort Peck. I didn't get that on my, on my dates to remember before I printed, before I hand printed it for me. Trialhead Special Meeting, Councilmember Kennedy mentioned this, is January 14th. My question to the council is, do you want it to start at 6 o'clock? Or do you want it to start at 7 o'clock? It is the only item on the agenda.
I would recommend 7 o'clock for the availability of all of our council members. If we get off from work.
I think 7:00 is pretty good, so.
Okay, so we're all in agreement?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, 7 o'clock it is. Liberty Lake Library and City Hall will propose on January 20th in observation of five minutes from March, and then a few days. I think we also hear Liberty Lake College Civil Rights Day, if I'm not mistaken. Gemma DeValley-Gaila has been signed up by Councilmember McKenna, Doug, and myself. And then January 24th, Mayor who I believe, and then Councilmember Burton, or excuse me, Mayor Burton is, is going to be there as well. So that's all good. And then finally, the Pull Up Clutch is not going to be in Liberty Lake this coming year. It's going to be in Tri-Cities, it's January 25th. And so I just wanted to ask that off.
I was really excited, Chief, to participate in the Pull Up Clutch this year, but unfortunately, since it's in Tri-Cities.
I can give you a ride, miss.
Very hard.
With lights.
Here, that's my report, thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Okay, we're at action items.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. I have a question, some point clarification. Can I see the train to correctly find me correct on this? But do we need a motion to amend the agenda to move item number 12 before the action items? Because of the project regarding contracts for Lochner.
I would make that a motion. Would that go on to be eight, that would be your recommendation?
Item number 12.
You want to make it as the last item under General Business?
Before the last item, because the last item is the September 9th.
Seven.
Correct. So you go before that. So you can either do it before that or before we can session this. So you may want to make a motion to that effect as far as.
I'd make that motion. Second. Want to favor? I oppose. I accept it. Okay, we are at action item percent agenda. Percent agenda. A1, approved December 17, 2019, City Council minutes. Second. Second. Want to favor? I. Oppose. A2, approved December 31st, 2018, vouchers amount of $735,047.47 in January, except the 2020 vouchers of the amount of $412,128.38. Second. Want to favor? I oppose. General Business, under D, General Business, one, confirm air, director's appointment of Sandy Bishop as Liberty Lake Library Board trustee. Second. Want to favor? I. Oppose. So that Sandy, I hope it allows that, you know, you have to answer the way. Sandy, did you want to say anything?
Well, thank you for approving me. I had been a one-year appointment, so I knew what I was getting into. So I'm happy to serve with me and the library.
Excited to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. General Business, B2, accept quill donation for presence of Liberty Lake Library valued $1,030. Second. Want to favor? I oppose. General Business, B3, accept donation for presence of Liberty Lake Library in the amount of $6,000. Second. Want to favor? I. Oppose. General Business, B4, authorize signature of the Amaraesca.
Amaraesca.
Amaraesca, very good. Energy audit fee proposal in the amount of $8,500. Second. Any questions on this, Mr. Mayor? Want to favor? I oppose. General Business, B5, approve the local agreement, TCB 3211, with Washington State Department of Transportation regarding Harvard Road and Henry Road, and authorize the judge to sign the agreement. Second. Any questions on this, comments? Chair, want to favor? I oppose. General Business, B6, authorize a very deciding agreement for outdoor lighting with a district for public, 40-yard security lights. Second. Any comments or questions? Chair, want to favor? I. Oppose. Then if I could ask Ann before we go on to five, seven, and you repeat the, what we proposed before, it's just for, it's just for Ann to every ordinance now. Okay, very good.
Ordinance number 264A, City of Liberty Lake, Spokane County, Washington. An ordinance amending ordinance number 264 passed by the City Council on December 17, 2019, entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, Adopting a Budget for the Period January 1, 2020 through December 31, 2020, Appropriating Funds and Establishing Salary Schedules for Established Positions."
Mr. Mayor, I move that we suspend the rules and proceed immediately to a secondary ordinance on 264A.
Second. Want to favor? I. Oppose.
Ordinance number 264A, City of Liberty Lake, Spokane County, Washington. An ordinance amending ordinance number 264 passed by the City Council on December 17, 2019, entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, Adopting a Budget for the Period January 1, 2020 through December 31, 2020, Appropriating Funds and Establishing Salary Schedules for Established Positions."
I move ordinance number 264A. Second. Want to favor? Want to favor? Almost forgot that. Any citizen comments on this topic? Ordinance number 264A. Going once, twice, four. Okay, Mr. Mayor, I do agree. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the General Business, D7?
We need to.
Let's go to process. Oh, sorry. So on favor, ordinance number 264A. Raise your hand. We're at four. Now we can move ahead. Now we can move ahead. General Business, D7, approve a group of engineering services for Henry Road or pass road extension with H.W. Lockner. Second. Any comments from the council? Want to favor? I. Oppose. Second radio ordinance. Yeah?
City of Liberty Lake, Spokane County, Washington, ordinance number 131-C. An ordinance of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, amending ordinance number 131-P passed on January 22nd, 2019, entitled, "Establishing a Municipal Library Fund to Change-Making Account for the City of Liberty Lake for the Purpose of Making Change for Cash Transactions."
Move ordinance number 131-C. Second. Citizen comments? My ordinance number 131-C. Want to favor, raise your hand. Right four. Introduction about coming agenda items.
Okay, once again, special meeting, we come to it at 7 o'clock. On the 21st of January, we have appreciation certificates for advisory board members, some folks that are no longer on our presentation with Park and Arts. We have some certificate, certification, and appreciations to announce. We do have a workshop that Councilmember McKenna asked to reduce the handfuls of those in the future to select a mayor of Pro-Town. What is on the agenda? Authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with his flash regarding WIC Enterprises. And I don't know, go over there if you want to mention some changes related to the flash.
Yeah, so for the community's sake, if you hadn't seen the most recent flash, before you would see the mayor's corner, where the mayor would write an article every month. I found it important that we expand that to the community corner. The community corner is going to be an opportunity for you to hear from and potentially meet other representatives of the city, to include city staff from City Hall, the Police Department, Fire, Sewer and Water District, to keep you informed on what's going on. And we really want to maintain that sense of transparency we talked about throughout 2019. And this is one of those opportunities to do so. So you're going to hear from a lot of different people throughout this organization and what's going on, and during the permanent times too. So maybe right before fire season comes, you'll hear from the fire department. And before we start watering our lawns, you might hear from Jen Camp with her Parks and Art Department. So I look forward to getting more information out to you guys.
We have a donation from Ross and Kelly Schneider, 6250, to go towards the mural at Good Heart. We have, we need, excuse me, Mayor Britner to confirm, excuse me, let me say this again. Mayor Britner will be recommending and will be considering adopting his appointments to the planning commission. We have the appointments that I talked about earlier to STA and SRTC. And then one executive session with an evaluation. If you have questions about that, call our City Attorney Sean Bass.
Anything else from your council? Citizen comments? This is your second and final opportunity for tonight's talk. Yes, sir.
Can I just talk from here, real quick?
Sure.
Just to remind the City Council, you know, on this bill that Ensley is playing with as a child, it does not come from licensing road improvements. Most of road improvements comes from gasoline tax. And we've been paying for that for years. So to have improvements to the City of Liberty Lake, it will come from gasoline tax, not from increased licensing fee.
Thank you. Any others?
And you can just note that J.C. was also speaking at the talk.
Any other citizen comments?
Our sewer and water board meeting is on the 14th this, this month at the district office over here. So you're all welcome to come, 4 o'clock. It's very interesting to be talking about sewer and water stuff. We had to change date from Monday to Tuesday. Early it's on a Monday, but next week will be on Tuesday.
Any other citizen comments? Well, all in all, we had a pretty quick meeting for our first one for 2020. I thank you guys for coming out. It means a lot. It really does. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
And I once again encourage individuals who are citizens, I already did, and I can, next week, 14th. So that will be a very good time.
Hang on a minute. Hang on a second.
I really love having you attend and spread the word as many people as I can here. It really means your help.
Yeah, so that was the 14th on the trial meeting. So please kind of give your feedback. Thank you, words earned.
That's seven.